Good evening, friends and colleagues. Welcome to the February 19, 2014 Capital Improvement Program and Finance Audit and Budget Committee Meeting of the Prince George's County Board of Education. Please note that there's been a change in the agenda today. We did an executive session at 3:00 PM today. That was added. As always, before we begin, I'll remind everyone to turn off your electronic devices. And we'll start with Ms. Parker. Please call the room.
Thank you. Dr. Anderson?
Present.
Mr. Burrows?
Here.
Ms. Epps?
Here.
Ms. Higgins? I'm sorry. Ms. Eubanks?
Here.
Ms. Higgins?
Present.
Ms. Jacobs?
Here.
Dr. Kaufman? Ms. Monday? Mr. Valentine? Ms. Waller?
Present.
Ms. Williams?
I'm here.
Ms. Musaria?
Here.
Ms. Boston?
Present.
Dr. Eubanks?
Present.
Thank you.
Before we begin our agenda, I'd like to give opportunity to offer Ms. Regina Jacobs a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to acknowledge in the audience that the board meeting did change somewhat, but we have Arthur Griffin, who is the Senior Vice President of the McGraw-Hill Urban Advisory Group here. He came here to participate in our board meeting and watch the new structure in action. We did change a little bit, but we're here. But the other importance of him is he worked with Charlotte Mecklenburg, the infamous Charlotte Mecklenburg School District, for 17 years or so, and has been working with urban boards of education and urban school districts for some time now. So I just wanted to acknowledge him. And he also worked with the Board of Education for Prince George's County under Dr. Dacey for years in doing board governance and training. Thanks for coming.
Welcome, my friend. I'm glad you're here to observe. God, I hope they're not recording these things. All right, let's move on. The agenda items for the CIP and FAB committee meetings are listed. Colleagues, do we have any questions before we begin? All right, seeing none, we will begin. There's no public comment speakers on discussion items this evening. So we will move on to item 3.0, FAB discussion items. At this time, I will yield the floor to Dr. Maxwell and the administration for an overview of FAB discussion items 3.1 and 3.2.
So, members of the board, there are two discussion items on the agenda for today's meeting, as you noted. The fiscal year 2014 appropriation reassignments and the March 2014 expenditure requirements. I believe you have them, and we have people who are ready to respond to any questions you may have about them. There's no formal presentation.
All right, so there's no formal presentation on these items. Board, I will entertain at this time if there are any questions or concerns about item 3.2. These are for discussion only. There are no, there's no action to be taken on these items this evening. Are there any questions? All right, hearing none, we will, we've concluded the FAB review items. We'll go on to the CIP discussion items, and I'll yield the floor to Dr. Maxwell and the administration for an overview of CIP discussion items number 4.1 through 4.5.
Thank you. Items 4.1 to 4.5 are before the board for discussion purposes and include the following: An amendment to the unit systemic replacement projects at Eleanor Roosevelt High School; final payment and acceptance for projects at Bladensburg High School, Largo High School, Friendly High School, and Drew Freeman Middle School. We are prepared to answer any questions you may have on these agenda items. No formal presentation.
Thank you very much. I don't have any questions because I've asked the staff and had them answered successfully, but I do want to thank the CIP staff and Ms. Goldson, your staff, for all the hard work that I certainly know that District 2 is generating in regards to the needs of the capital projects, and really appreciate your hard work, and certainly support the efforts that are being done regarding Eleanor Roosevelt H.BAC. You're working on things that have been needed for quite a number of years. Appreciate it.
Dr. Anderson?
Thank you very much. Just one question related to an indication of whether any of these... Actually, I pass on this one.
Okay. I'll get to you later.
Y'all set?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Burrows?
Dr. Maxwell and Ms. Goldson, thank you for the information. I was happy to see that there were a number of indicators that some of the contractors were minority business, so thank you for listing that for the board's review. I did have a question, since this is a CIP discussion. I just wanted to publicly ask you guys to assess the gym floor at Friendly. It's 90%, 70% concrete, and a large, you know, significant amount of students have been injured over the years, and they're still getting injured. Staff, parents, students have started to write me with their concerns. And so this, because this is a CIP discussion, I wanted to bring that to your attention.
So, actually, Ms. Goldson, and I'll let her really do the response, but we have discussed that. It was brought to my attention by Ms. Boston and some students at Friendly High School when I was there not long ago. And, you know, so I'll turn it over to you.
We actually have assigned staff to go out and assess the site and provide us a report back. Unfortunately, due to the inclement weather that we've had recently, we haven't followed up to get the response back, but I will include that response in the weekly update. If it's not for Friday's weekly update, it'll definitely be in next week's.
Thanks.
No problem.
Thank you, Mr. Burrows. Are there any additional questions? All right, seeing none, then that concludes our FAB discussion items, I mean, I'm sorry, our CIP discussion items for this evening. We'll now move on to our presentation item on the CEO's recommended boundary grade and program improvements. I'll yield the floor to Dr. Maxwell and the administration for an introduction of the presentation item 5.1.
So, members of the board, our recommendations, Mr. John Dell Jones, Brian's gonna, the Director of Pupil Accounting and School Boundaries is going to provide an overview of the recommended boundary grade and program improvements. John Dell?
It's my pleasure to go ahead and provide an overview of the CEO's recommendations regarding boundary grade and program improvements. The focus of this evening's presentation are going to be those components which have implications in regards to...
We'll be running here in a moment.
Meanwhile, I want to go ahead and talk generally.
Do you have any background music that we can play while we're waiting?
If you go ahead and advance slide number four. Okay. Again, in regards to the CEO's recommendations, there are really four main areas of emphasis which impact, again, the assignment of children to schools. Those are, again, the establishment of boundaries for the new Hyattsville area elementary school; the adjustment of boundaries and future grade changes for Barack Obama Elementary School; the adjustment of selected sixth grade, sixth grades from selected elementary schools to a middle school, as well as the creation of three Spanish immersion schools, again, pending approval of the budget. For the Hyattsville area elementary school, that process actually started during the summer where we convened a community group to help advise us regarding the creation of boundaries. And the expected structure of that new school includes the creation of a creative and performing arts theme at that school. It is expected to operate as a pre-K to five configuration. Again, the naming process, as well as identification of principal and leadership for the school, will take place this spring. And again, it obviously impacts the adjacent schools, primarily Rosa Parks and Carroll Highlands Elementary Schools. What you have before you is a map on the left-hand side, as you face the screen, showing what the before boundaries are, and on the right-hand side, showing what the proposed adjustments are. One of the things that we were able to accomplish with the proposed boundaries is elimination of an off area or an island. You'll notice a brown area immediately adjacent to that lime green area. That, in fact, is the current area assigned to Carroll Highlands Elementary. Again, that neighborhood has been long separated from the rest of the school's attendance area and obviously is not immediately adjacent to the school. Because of capacity and other issues, they have been bussed for the past number of years. With the establishment of additional 790 seats with the new elementary school, we are able to propose the elimination of that off area. Again, the schools that are primarily contributing students to the new Hyattsville area elementary school are going to be Rosa Parks Elementary, as well as, again, Carroll Highlands, that off area that I just mentioned. Here we have a numeric summary of the before and after circumstance. This numeric summary is really intended to go ahead and give you a rather succinct capsule of the change if the boundaries were put in place immediately. If there were no phasing, no adjustments, but then, in fact, those boundaries on September 30th were put into place, this is what type of change would be expected. Again, with the new Hyattsville Elementary School with a capacity of 790, using today's pupil, there would be approximately 666 students that would be assigned, with leaving 124 seats open. Again, many of you are familiar with our new schools phenomena, where every time we open up a new school, there are, again, additional children which report that previously were not participating in the public school system, or, again, it becomes a bit of an attractor and folks move into the neighborhood. So we do expect that number to rise somewhat. In regards to Carroll Highlands, again, we had mentioned before that that school had been long overcrowded and we had been unable to make any adjustments. With the contribution of some of its pupils to the Hyattsville area school, we're able to reduce its utilization from 139% to approximately 86%. Again, unfortunately, the number of seats that we have overall is not sufficient to eliminate all overcrowding in the area. And Lewisdale Elementary is one of the schools that illustrates that point exactly. And as far as currently, it's overcrowded by approximately 42%. And even with the new school, again, they're not immediately adjacent to that new school, there's only a very modest change. That then possibly becomes a subject for our future capital improvement program of an addition to the school to relieve that overcrowding. But again, the opening of the new school is not able to offer any immediate relief to that current overcrowding. Rosa Parks Elementary School is able to experience some reduction in enrollments. And again, we have another change that's occurring in the immediate area that we'll talk about a little bit later on. And again, University Park contributes a small number of students to the new Hyattsville area elementary school. With changes in grade structure, there would also be, again, a increased enrollment at Nicholas Orum Middle School. An area that has been the subject of, again, some discussion and some adjustment from our public forums, has been the attendance area for Barack Obama Elementary School. During the forums, we solicited public input on plans to adjust the grade structure and also inquired at the time, noting some hesitancy in terms of adjusting the boundaries because that school had experienced some change in boundaries only four years previous. Again, the feedback that we received from the community was, in fact, endorsement of changes to the boundary. And again, while hesitant in regards to the grade six change, again, we did want to go ahead and communicate to them that that is part of an academic strategy, which would, in fact, not only that school, but other schools. Again, taking into account the public feedback from that public forum, we did, in fact, the superintendent has a adjusted boundary that he's proposing with a assignment of one area that's currently assigned to Barack Obama, to Perrywood Elementary; a small number of students going from Barack Obama to Patuxent; and a modest number of students going from Arrowhead into Barack Obama. We think that that revised boundary provides a more compact and cohesive boundary than previously was in the, in existence. Next slide. That next slide also goes ahead and summarizes the before and after circumstance for Barack Obama and the affected schools, Arrowhead, Patuxent, Perrywood, and, again, Kettering Middle, where the grade structure is being adjusted. Again, for Barack Obama, it is somewhat overcrowded at 107%. With the boundary change, again, that would reduce, be reduced to approximately 91% of capacity. Arrowhead at 96% would be reduced to approximately 89%. Patuxent Elementary, which is underutilized at 65%, is increased somewhat to 69%. Perrywood at 81% is increased to 89% of utilization. One of the other changes that was the subject of much discussion and input from the public was our proposal regarding changes of assignment of the sixth grade to middle schools. This is, again, a continuation of a previous initiative that had been started at the, in the district, and, again, creates some anxiety among our parents who were, expressed some hesitancy about how well-prepared their sixth graders were to be in the same environment as the, as middle school, sixth and seventh, excuse me, seventh and eighth grade students. Again, one of the points that we wanted to communicate to them was the fact that in regards to the overall academic structure, that, in fact, sixth grade students are considered secondary students, and is part of the middle school experiences in preparation for their high school careers, and that the short transitions that we have for our sixth, with only a seventh and eighth grade, structure for our middle schools, in fact, handicaps our students in some regards in the amount of that preparation. This is, again, an initiative that has received endorsement from our Department of Academics and, in fact, the leading proponent of that. And in order to somewhat ease parents' concerns, one of the things that we committed to doing is to try and develop a schedule of anticipated sixth grade changes, such that they could, in most cases, receive a full year's notice before that transition went into effect. Again, there will be some instances where, because of capacity or other issues, we're not able to give a full year advance notice, but we have identified as part of this proposal several schools which we are anticipating making that change in the 15, 16 school year, and really wanted to go ahead and have parents, one, be aware of that, and, two, to get comfortable with that expected transition. For this coming school year, there are four elementary schools where we're proposing the sixth grade be transitioned to middle school. Those schools are Chilum Elementary, Mother Harris Mary Jones, Mary Harris Mother Jones Elementary School, Matapanai Elementary, and Thomas Stone Elementary. Again, in some cases, those changes, in addition to the academic reasons, are contributing to alleviating some overcrowding at those schools. In the case of Matapanai, it, again, adopts a grade structure that is consistent with our tag program, again, which operates up to the fifth grade, and the remaining students at Matapanai would not be sufficient to fully, to have a full sixth grade academic program at that time. As I indicated, we did want to go ahead and give advance notice where possible of impending grade changes, and so we have also identified those changes that would be implemented in the 15, 16 school year. Those include changes from the elementary school of Arrowhead, Barack Obama, Marlton Elementary, Melwood, and Rosemary. As parents did note, that the current middle school for Barack Obama, again, James Madison, currently is sufficiently crowded that it cannot accommodate sixth grade students at this time. And again, there would be boundary adjustments in terms of evening out the enrollment between James Madison and the adjacent middle schools, such that we can continue this initiative. One of the other items that has received much attention during our forums and also during the budget hearings, I'm certain, has been the creation of new Spanish immersion programs. Three sites are proposed to become dedicated magnet programs, those sites being Caesar Chavez Elementary, P.E. Williams Elementary, Overlook Elementary. These programs would be accepting approximately 75 kindergarten students at Caesar Chavez and 100 at the two adjacent sites, assigned through the lottery. The current lottery that is currently open for our magnet and tag programs includes an option to request enrollment in the Spanish immersion sites. In the Caesar Chavez site, the immersion would be a dual-language program. That is where the instruction for certain key subjects is done in English and also in Spanish at the same time. The enrollment in the program would be expected to be approximately 50% native English speakers and 50% students whose native language in their home is Spanish. At the other two sites are geared primarily for immersion in the Spanish language, and there would be no English instruction in the, in the kindergartens for those programs. And again, 100 students at both P.E. Williams as well as Overlook. One of the key questions that we needed to resolve in terms of establishing a new magnet programs is how to fully utilize those buildings as we began to grow the programs. Again, in the past, again, establishing a new program, you can empty out the building, but then we'd have a school with approximately 550 capacity occupied by 75 or 100 kindergartners. And again, not a very efficient use of space and time, et cetera. In order to go ahead and better utilize the building, as well as to provide a more gradual transition for parents and students currently in that building, what we're doing is phasing out the boundaries of those schools. Students that are currently attending those schools in kindergarten through grade five or grade six, again, our grade six students would move up to grade seven, but for the next year, they would remain in those schools. In fact, we have committed to go ahead and advance that a grade at a time, as so long as the enrollment in those school, in those comprehensive programs remains sustainable. What I mean by that is in some of the schools, the enrollment is fairly modest. There may be, for example, 33 students in the third grade. So, for 33 students, again, they're currently providing comprehensive education, and if that number drops to 25, again, that's a sustainable number for a class. If, however, the parents choose to withdraw their students to enroll in the newly-assigned school, and that number is reduced to 15 or 12, that would not be a sustainable classroom. And that's why we indicated that we would reevaluate the phasing after one full year of implementation. Again, that concept is something that we've had a little bit of difficulty in terms of communicating to parents. And again, this chart here tries to outline that in a little bit clearer fashion for the parents and the public in general to understand, where it indicates which, you know, depending upon which grade your child will be in the next year, what the school assignment would be. Again, in regards to Caesar Chavez, again, this is in the same general area as the Hyattsville, New Hyattsville area elementary school. The attendance area for Caesar Chavez would be phased out, with those students being assigned primarily to Chilum and to Rosa Parks. Next slide. And again, a estimate of the impact. Again, this impact summary is, again, hypothetical in as far as we're not making the change all at once, but in fact are phasing the school, the boundaries out. So again, this is the impact after all changes have been implemented and phased through. This is not the number that we would expect next year. In regards to P.E. Williams, again, the attendance area for that school also would be phased out in the same manner, phased in over time, with kindergarten students being first grade of the new Spanish immersion program, and the current attendance area being reassigned to Kettering Elementary and to James Everett Just. There is an adjustment that would be proposed for the middle school of boundaries, to go ahead and keep those alignments consistent with the feeder schools. Again, assuming that we weren't phasing, but in fact the changes were implemented all at once, the numeric summary here presents what the impact would be. Overlook Elementary is the third site of the Spanish immersion program as proposed, and for there, again, we would be phasing that in a grade at a time, starting with 100 kindergartners. The existing attendance area would be phased out, with the new attendance area being assigned to Panorama. And again, there also an adjustment of the middle school boundaries to keep the alignment in a nice feeder pattern. And again, a numeric summary indicating what the change would be if there were no phasing, and the change were to be implemented all in one fell swoop. With that, that includes the overview of the CEO's recommendations regarding boundary grade and program improvements, and I'd be glad to address any questions that you might
Thank you very much for that presentation. We do, the board is lighting up. I'll start with Ms. Boston and try to get my best of what I just saw for everyone else.
First, I want to thank you for the, for the presentation and doing this work. I know it's tedious work, and I want to thank you for all the effort that you put into it. But I have one question. Last night, when we were here at the boundary hearings, one of the parents that testified mentioned that they already received their letters for changes, and I, if you could pull up the calendar that you had up there, I thought that that notification was supposed to be sent out in March, but parents indicated they'd already received notification early February that those changes were going to take place.
I'm afraid that there was probably misinterpretation of the communication that was received. Part of what we did, in terms of ensuring that the public was aware of the upcoming public hearing, is that we, one, mailed to addresses that potentially were impacted by the change, notice of the public hearing, inviting them to provide input before the decision was made. After the board has acted, again, assuming changes, a communication, US Postal Mail would go out notifying them of the change to their specific children.
Okay. Thank you. I understand. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you. Oh, one other question. What consideration are we going to give to kids that are in those schools that are proposed to move from that school to another school, like grandfathering them, and if they're there, is it their last year there, or whatever circumstances?
And that's always a difficult question in terms of how to manage that transition. One of the things that, that the district has done is that they have modified and updated the administrative procedure that handles student record, that student records and transfers uses, in terms of gauging whether or not transfers are permitted. And they have written in a provision specifically giving additional consideration to students that are in the terminal year. In some cases, again, that would be as a right to remain, if you will. And part of what we've tried to do is identify for parents that option such that if they are concerned about that transition, and again, in some cases, there's a prospect of, again, them changing schools in consecutive years. Again, we would invite them and encourage them to go ahead and seek that option.
So I'm trying, I don't think I clearly understand you. So will they also be offered transportation? If they're, if, if they're in the, say if they're in the sixth grade, the kids will be going to sixth grade next year and we're proposing to uproot them from a school that they've been in all year, or maybe for years. And their last year to want to be there with their classmates and maybe, maybe ten of those kids. So we're, we're going to move them. We're not giving them any option to remain at that school for that last year. We're just going to say, you know, you may or you may not be able to stay?
Well, generally, in terms of, again, a parent-initiated transfer, part of the onus, if you will, in regards to transportation shifts from the parent, excuse me, shifts from the school district to the parent as, again, an item that they're requesting. In some cases, as you know, for example, when we were discussing changes to Oxon Hill High School, there was in fact transportation that was provided as a means of phasing that. In this particular case, we have not recommended that as a, as initial accommodation, if you will.
But will we consider that? Can we look at that possibility? Because, you know, I mean, you got to look at the numbers. I mean, you need to be fair to those who've been there for years and years and years and you're just uprooting them.
Well, at some point, if we're going to move, I mean, we could certainly look at the cost of transportation for that final year for transportation, but if the idea is to relieve, you know, the overcrowding by moving the sixth grade to the middle school for programmatic changes. Again, a lot of our middle schools already have sixth grade, but they've remained in some.
I'm not talking about the ones that are actually going to be moving, that their whole sixth grade is going to be moving. I'm talking about when you're removing the boundary and you're taking a small section of kids. Okay, we send you back, you know, to your community, you know, what are, that's the one I'm talking about. That, that, you know, we're going to look at that because you're uprooting maybe a handful of kids out of that class, out of their sixth grade class that they've been there all year.
So typically, as, as John Dahl has said, you know, we don't provide transportation for the four or five kids here. It's very expensive to do that. I mean, we could certainly see how many transfers we get, see if there's a cost effectiveness to it. But if there's only four or five kids in one community that want to go, you know, back to one school when the bus is running in a different direction, it's just not cost effective to do it, which is why we say if you want to, you know, stay in that school, you can do it at your expense. But for us to double transport, that's essentially what we'd be doing is providing transportation for one community to two different elementary schools.
Because I know we've done it in the past. I know when we built, I mean, we've opened schools, we've grandfathered kids in that were in that last year for them to finish out that last year and it wasn't a cost to the parent.
Sure. Well, I mean, again, we can, we can talk about the cost and, you know, and certainly respond to that. But I think we, I think typically, you know, we would, as, as, you know, has been said, you know, send people into the transfer process. And if there are a lot of transfers, then we could certainly analyze whether that would, you know, whether that would be feasible or not.
Okay, thank you.
All right, colleagues, you literally all buzzed in at the same time. I have no idea if this is the right order, but what I have is Kaufman, Anderson, Jacobs, Waller, Williams, Burrows, Epps, Higgins, and Ubanks. Mr., Dr. Kaufman. Mr. Kaufman, oh, he lost his place. Dr. Anderson.
I'm glad I'm here. I thank you, Mr. Jones Brown, for your very thoughtful presentation. I would like you to speak, though, just a little bit to Spanish-speaking students enrolled in Spanish immersion programs. What, what outcomes do you expect? Just give us just a little more background on that, please.
And I'm going to, again, apologize for those that are not familiar with my background. I'm not really an educator, so again, I'm not the expert in regards to that. And again, Dr. Whitehead is in the audience if we need to elaborate. But essentially, with the dual-language in particular, part of what we expect is the joint development of facility in both English and Spanish. Some of the students in the program, those that are native Spanish speakers, would come in with some facility in regards to Spanish and limitations in their English-speaking ability and writing ability. It's expected that this program will help accelerate their English language abilities. And again, their classmates, native English speakers, will be helping them along. In turn, for the native English speakers, we expect that the dual-language program will accelerate their familiarity with the Spanish language program and that their Spanish-speaking room classmates will help them in that program.
I think John Dale phrased it very well. When we implement a dual-language program, one of the concerns of the parents is that their students that only speak maybe Spanish learn the English language. So in, in that sense, we have all of our students learning to speak the Spanish language and so therefore acquiring a fluency in a world language. When we do a Spanish immersion program, our goal is still for our students to be able to be fluent in that language. And so they will also have a second and a third language. And of course, the second language is always English because as they traverse, you know, through our system, their assessments will still be in English. So our outcome is to have students that are very fluent in the language.
Thank you.
Y'all set, Dr. Anderson?
Just, any, any restrictions on number of years that those students would be in those dual-enrollment schools?
There are not usually. I mean, we certainly are going to have to, you know, make some decisions based on enrollment as we go through elementary school to decide on the size, you know, for middle school and high school, for example. But we have some French immersion students who are at Central High School right now doing, they're not in a full immersion program at the high school, but they just tested. You were at the program where they were awarded their certificates by the French government.
I'm more concerned about the dual enrollment, you know, so that the Spanish-speaking students would truly become proficient in English.
And in, and in their own language, in some cases. Depending on how long families have been here in the country, they may, they may not be fluent in, in the written word and, and, and things in their own language, regardless of whether we're talking about Spanish or other language. So, so, and, and I know that we talked about speaking, but there's also writing involved. I mean, the content is being taught in the target language. And in, you know, dual, in the dual enrollment piece, of course, you look for schools that have a balance of, you know, the two languages that are going to be included. In a full immersion, it doesn't, you know, really matter. But, you know, there are other, you know, ways that people certainly work Spanish for Spanish speakers. I mean, there's lots of different, you know, course offerings that are, that are out there in the, in the second language world. But there's not really a restriction how long, you know, students can, can be in it. I've had, in my experiences, Spanish, you know, native speakers who have gone through AP Spanish and taken the AP exam and good for my test scores and their, and their skill.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Jacobs.
Thank you. So usually when we have these discussions about boundary changes, we kind of shift it to actually add the academic piece and talk about what that looks like in terms of the changes. So looking, aside from really wanting to see a comprehensive boundary review of District Five in general, so I'm looking at Perrywood-Pituxent and, and the changes. So for Perrywood, it's sixty-seven students and for Pituxent, it's nineteen in terms of a change. Can you explain that small number? And then I wanted to follow up with the two communities that would feed into that, into that particular school. So you remember before, we, we've had situations where like six students moving and, like, you know, is it really worth it to move nineteen students?
And this is an area where if while we're revising boundaries, we really try and take a hard look and we invite transportation to sit down with us and look at what the natural boundaries are for a neighborhood. Again, as you know, with a long history of our boundaries being formed for desegregation and other purposes, sometimes they don't make sense. And when we come across those instances, we have the choice in terms of leaving them there for posterity purposes. They've always been there, even though they don't make sense and they cost our transportation office dearly in regards to those isolated cases, or we can go ahead and try and address those. And that's what we've attempted to do here is in terms of some areas, like the area that's proposed for reassignment to Pituxent. If you look at the distance that the students have to travel and the natural affinity of that neighborhood to schools, again, you would likely conclude without, you know, prior knowledge that it really should be assigned to Pituxent rather than Barack Obama. And so those relatively modest adjustments, when we're doing things of that type, we do them judiciously, not just for the sake of minor fine tuning, but where they really, again, would be of benefit.
So that really brings me to my next point. So the communities, I think it's Balmoral and Beechtree Communities, which are a hop, skip, and a jump from Pituxent. So there is a number of families there now in both of those communities who have kids who are three and four years old. Because they happen to be at the same daycare my son goes to. But the point is, these are parents who are talking about not Pituxent Elementary, but having conversations about which private school they're going to put their kids in. And so these two communities have a lot of kids who are not school age now. And I know we don't count them necessarily. But what I'd like to see is a real community school system effort to reach out to those parents and talk to them about what Pituxent could look like in terms of some of their concerns. And I, and I think it's, it's real that these are two communities that certainly fit within the parameters of making sure these families enroll in the school system and not in private school. So to that point, if, and if you could get back to me, if you're okay with that, Dr. Maxwell, I really would like to see us talk about and come up with, from an academic perspective, how do we, looking at the boundaries, because if you look at the numbers, I mean, they're significant. The SRC data shows that it's significantly under-enrolled. And in the next year, that could change if these families do in fact go to Pituxent.
Again, I think that point is well made, you know.
So if we could do that, like, within the next several months, or at least over, however you think the best schedule is to do it, I think that's really critical.
Okay, thank you for that.
We're making a note. We'll take care of it.
Thank you, Ms. Waller.
Thank you, and thank you for all of your hard work on the boundary changes and the questions. And I know we've, we faced a few challenges in getting some information out to our parents, but I know we, we're on top of it. I'm, I receive a lot of queries about how soon can we expect a community meeting about the name change for the new Hyattsville Elementary School? I know we're seeing spring, but when, when are we talking about?
We will review the process that we just approved, I want to say about two months ago, for the naming process. And we'll begin soon, within hopefully the next month, to begin to convene that committee to begin the process.
Okay, okay. And so I know we said we would have a community meeting to involve the community. Is, are we having a community meeting? Are we going to have a community meeting about, to engage the community with things that are going on with that proposed school?
We, we actually are going to do surveys, but that administrative procedure also looked at selecting representatives from that community as well. So they'll have surveys and then there'll be a selection of representatives from the community to sit on the committee for the naming process.
Okay, and so we will not literally have a community meeting for the community to sit in on the, I understand what you're saying, you're going to have a committee. But we're, you know, because it was said that we were going to go to the community and talk to the community. And I'm just asking, when are we going to the community?
Those two things are not necessarily in opposition. You know, we can have a committee that would engage the community, just as we have here. It's just who's going to actually be making the recommendation, you know, to us and to the board is really with the process of the committee. So there's no problem with setting up a meeting in that community with, you know, community associations and, you know, school, you know, people who are going to be attending the school and those kind of things and having the committee hear, hear their input.
Because I keep hearing, you know, everybody's asking, they're waiting for me. They want to be, they want to see, talk, feel, you know, everybody's excited about this new school. And I, in, in looking at our enrollment impacts, I did take note that Carroll Highlands is finally the boundary, the enrollment is going down. And I'm really pleased about that community and way the boundaries are set up for that area. And as I was speaking with one of my colleagues, I had noted also that Lewisdale is in an area that we still have a very high population there. And I don't know, I guess we would have to talk about that at a later date because we do have new development coming in over on that Route One corridor and off of East West Highway that I'm being told that will, their parents with, families with children are moving into those complexes. And I thought mostly they, they would be for adults, but we're having young children and families moving into those areas. So I guess we could address Lewisdale at another time. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Williams.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. My biggest question, and I just would like some insight on, as we transition the sixth graders out of elementary, if they're currently fifth graders now, they're in elementary, they will be going to a middle school. Is there some thought or curriculum changes that we could implement to allow them to transition out of the daily routine of having recess and things like that into not having recess? Maybe during half of the year, they have some time for recess and then they transition out of not having recess at a later date. And the other issue that I wanted to have you address is one of the concerns that the parents brought up, and I think is very valid. We're talking about putting sixth graders into a middle school that does not offer before and after care. So those kids would be responsible for.
I'm sorry, does not, does not offer?
Before and after care. And so they would be responsible for getting themselves out of the house and into the school and then from school and back home, possibly alone. Is there some thought into offering the sixth graders before and after care opportunities or working with some of the community daycare providers to make sure parents know that that's available?
I think that both of your questions are very insightful. We can definitely take a look into the transition for our sixth graders into middle school, especially since we have third and at least fourth quarter still ahead of us and what we can do in order to assist with that transition. The second piece is, is that of course, you know, this transition is not the first time for the county. So we can take a look at how other middle schools have assisted parents with that transition since they do not have before and after care, but seeing once again, as you suggested, what daycare providers are out there. Because we still do see karate buses and sports buses that come to the middle schools as well. And just helping parents through that transition, I think is very good.
Yeah, I think because if you look at the age group that we're talking about, we're talking about nine, nine-year-olds to eleven-year-olds approximately. Is that right? That are in the sixth grade?
Usually eleven and twelve-year-olds.
Eleven and twelve-year-olds, yeah. So just, I think that if there is a big concern about having a child come home and if we offer those or assist the parents with that information, that is sort of a, a little carrot that we can offer them to make them feel a little better about this.
We appreciate that recommendation and definitely will look into it. And I just wanted to add that we currently have forty-eight schools that are, go to K through five. So we have several schools that we reach out to, to work through what they used as their model for transitioning for moving those sixth graders to middle school.
Mr. Burrows.
Good evening. You know, I'm extremely excited about the Spanish immersion programs. I'm happy that, you know, there'll be a program in the north, middle and southern part of the county. It makes a whole lot of sense to me to have native Spanish speakers enter into the school. As someone who's been through a language immersion program, you know, that, that experience is invaluable. You know, that, that experience is invaluable, I mean, because they'll become friends, and, you know, it's, it'll be, it'll be great. That sense of community that, you know. But I did have a few questions. Will transportation be provided for these students?
Yes, it would be.
Okay. And sibling enrollment, will, would or would not apply?
Okay. These would fall under the same rules as our other immersion and Montessori and specialty programs, and so it would have the same sibling policies in place.
Okay.
If there's a student already participating in the program-
Right.
-and they have a sibling that's at the entry grade, they would be afforded access to the program without going through the lottery.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and, you know, I'd like to echo, as my colleagues, my appreciation for the, the difficult work. Some of this has been answered by Dr. Davis, but I, I guess, inasmuch as I have a school that's going to be impacted in 14, 15 Buck Lodge Middle, who's receiving students from Mary Harris Mother Jones Elementary. So what I didn't see, and maybe I missed this, was, was there a slide to show the capacity of Buck Lodge Middle prior to and after the change, or after the, the receipt of sixth grade? Because I just wanted to kind of understand how that would impact the capacity of the school a little bit better.
I apologize, I don't think that in the presentation that we included that detail. Again, that is something that we covered in, as part of the public forums that we had, and there seemed to be an appreciation of the issues, and there were not, there was little controversy in that. And so in terms of trying to keep the presentation of modest size, we did not include the slide that talks specifically about that. But as you note, Mother Harris, Mary Harris Mother Jones is suffering right now from severe overcrowding. Buck Lodge is also a school that's well utilized, it is not suffering to the same degree, if you will, in that regards, as Mary Harris Mother Jones. And part of what we saw was, again, little opportunity to relieve the overcrowding at Mary Harris Mother Jones due to the overcrowding of its adjacent schools. And again, in terms of Buck Lodge, again, while the available space there is modest, generally our middle schools are better able to accommodate a small degree of overcrowding than are some of our elementary schools. And so this is not necessarily an optimal solution by any means, and I, and part of what we've concluded that, in fact, that capacity expansions in the way of, again, classroom additions, there is in the out-years of the CIP, a middle school that's targeted for the north area, no site has yet been located. But those type of enhancements in terms of additional seats are really going to be needed in terms of addressing the overcrowding at the middle and elementary schools in those areas.
And Ms. Epps, I would just add that some, some time ago, there was a sixth grade component from Langley Park McCormick Elementary School that was at Buck Lodge Middle School in those days, and it has since reverted back to Langley Park, and I know there's actually some sentiment to, to move them as well, but there's only so much space. But we have to deal with the really, the, the fact that it's really impacted in that area, and we need some more, you know, we need some more sites, some more opportunities for our kids, but I think, I think the point here is that Buck Lodge is better able to handle that number of kids than Mary, than, than the elementary school right now.
And we will go ahead and get you that tabular sheet, which summarizes, again, the before and after circumstance for Buck Lodge and the other schools.
Okay, and I guess, on the academic side, given that Buck Lodge is receiving a lot of programming around one-to-one technology instruction, how will the new sixth grade be, wait, yes, so how, so those students, okay, I'm trying to wrap my head around this. So there's always, already a sixth grade, and then they're bringing in more students into sixth grade? Right, okay, so they, they're going to need more equipment.
We'll, we'll provide that.
Right, okay.
We'll provide it.
Okay. I guess the other is more of a, my other question is, is a broader question with regard to the alignment with our county's economic development planning, and how, and I think one of my colleagues asked a similar question. So clearly, there's economic development happening in Prince George's in a way that, you know, hadn't happened in the past, especially during the downturn and everything. So with that in mind, is there a concerted effort, you know, of alignment with the county's Economic Development Department or the county executive and his staff to kind of take those, that new economic development into account, and the need for boundary changes in out-years? And having said that, let me also say this, that you had mentioned, I've heard you say twice now about the CI, like, dealing with overcrowding issues from a CIP perspective, but I'm really sensitive to that, because clearly, our CIP needs are grossly underfunded by the state, and it doesn't look like that's going to change in the foreseeable future. So even if we do get, you know, some proposals in, then you're talking about shifting priorities for projects that are already slated on the list to be, you know, to be addressed. So all that, and I'll let you respond any way you feel, you see fit. Thank you for all your work.
And certainly. And again, the CIP, as you mentioned, is going to be, remain an area where, where we challenge, where the needs far exceed, again, the funds that are currently available. And I know that there are initiatives in terms of expanding the pool of funds, but one of the things that we are attempting to do is to provide a more critical analysis in regards to the projects, taking a longer-term view in terms of how to address those deficiencies and needs that currently exist. In some areas, we found that there are no alternatives. Well, again, we look to boundary changes to go ahead and even off enrollment where that's possible. But again, in some areas of our county in particular, that, that is not a solution, it is not possible because of overcrowding of the adjacent schools. And there, again, the matter of additional seats becomes critical. As you note, there's also, again, interest in terms of expanding pre-kindergarten spaces in our schools, and that also is going to pose us challenges in regards to space, particularly where we are overcrowded currently. And those solutions, again, are not going to come easy. We're working very closely with our Capital Improvement Programs Office, as well as with the county in terms of identifying what options might be available.
I would also add that there's a recognition, I think, at the state and the county level, that, that there has to be, you know, sort of a focus on this issue, and you may recall just a month or so ago, there was a coming together in Annapolis of the county executives of the three large districts in Maryland, and, you know, where that, where that goes or doesn't go, it does sort of say, you know, there are people that are focused on this conversation and, and are, you know, really concerned about it, and so I'm optimistic that over the next few years, and I know that's not like for this boundary change or anything, but I'm really hopeful that we're going to find some creative opportunities between state and local, you know, funding to give us some advantages. And there are also, you know, certainly some options that are out there, you know, for us to look at, you know, atypical sites, I guess, sites that we wouldn't typically think of as public schools, and, and, you know, look at renovations and opportunities to, to do some of that. You're welcome, I'm, I'm sorry to have been preempted.
In regards to our-
Paraguayan program.
In regards to-
Is it a bat or a bird, or is it a bug? It's a fly, it's a fly floating around, take it easy. Excuse me.
That's a big fly.
Excuse us while we evacuate.
One of the things that we are very sensitive to is, again, the trajectory and development in regards to Prince George's County has changed in recent years, and we remain very mindful of that. We're currently engaged in a pupil yield study with the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Department, Prince George's County Planning Department, in terms of better assessing the impact of new developments on the number of students that would be added to the school system.
Excuse us, sir, excuse us. We got everything, everything's under control over there, Daniel. All right. Ms. Higgins.
It's on to your drawing.
I'll duck while I'm answering the question. So first of all, let me say how appreciative I am for Dr. Maxwell and, and the staff about the thoughtful way that this work has been done, and I'm particularly excited about the Spanish immersion program and what that's going to be able to offer our students. My questions, I, I guess one of my questions has to do with the state-rated capacity, and I'll use Greenbelt Middle as an example, that Greenbelt Middle is already addressing over-enrollment issues in terms of, but it still is close to or right below the state-rated capacity, even though there really is no more classroom space in the school. So could you talk a little bit about what the state-rated capacity includes in that formula?
The Maryland Code of Regulations actually establishes the formulas that are used, or the processes, if you will, in terms of establishing state-rated capacity. Again, the Maryland Department of Planning, along with Maryland State Department of Education, as part of the Public School Construction Program, actually adopts and updates on a regular basis the specific guidelines in as far as the calculation of state-rated capacity. Part of the underlying rationale in terms of having that state-rated capacity is that Prince George's County is in competition with other municipalities, with other counties in the city of Baltimore for funds, and in terms of comparing projects that we might put forth or they put forth, they want to make sure that we're using a similar yardstick in terms of identifying the need. And so what they've established is a structured formula, which talks about what is the capacity, the preferred capacity of a school. It's not necessarily expected to be, to dictate what class sizes are, or even how you use the building, but rather in terms of establishing a standard that the state can use in terms of evaluating our proposals when we say that a school is overcrowded, or if they believe that a school is underutilized, to make sure that we're talking apples-to-apples comparison. The, okay, the formula itself varies by educational level. There's particular guidelines in regards to preschool, grades one to two, I believe it is, and then three through five, and then secondary classes in particular. There are adjustments that are made for special education classes, and there's, again, a single standard that they would use for that, whereas in Prince George's County, we in fact have variations. If we're talking an autism class versus a CSEP class versus a hearing program, we might vary locally the occupation of a particular classroom, but for state rating purposes, they would use a single number.
Let me, let me just jump in then and ask the question this way. I know when we did a walkthrough, I think it was last year, in regards to the facility, it was then that I learned that library space or other centralized space, I think they have a, a band room, that those footage, square footage is also considered part of the state-rated capacity in terms of the number of students that can fit into that school, whereas, you know, you can't really use the library as a classroom. Is that, am I right about that, or that-
I, I do not believe that is correct. The state essentially uses classrooms as a starting point-
Right.
-and it uses gymnasiums as, again, teaching stations, where it can expect that the two physical ed classes can be held in a standard-sized gymnasium, basketball court-type thing, and they'll make adjustments for that. But they exclude from the calculation of state-rated capacities, any classroom that's under 500 square foot, they exclude areas that are dedicated for other uses, they will exclude areas that have a community partnership liaison where the community is using part of the space.
Okay, okay, that's very helpful, all right. And then the last thing I would say is, a number of schools in my district, when Greenbelt Middle opened up, there were fifth-grade students, rising sixth graders, who went to Greenbelt Middle, and the parents were very nervous to have their young sixth graders in with the older students. What really helped was that the principal at Greenbelt Middle and the principals from the schools that were losing the students worked together to provide information and help communicate to parents, and the other real selling point was a parent who had experienced their fifth grader going to a middle school, coming back and telling parents, you know, it worked fine. So that, that really, if, if we can't have somebody live do it, then maybe we could interview some parents who have gone through that process, had the safe, same worries, because every parent wants their child educated and wants them to be in a safe environment, everybody's the same in that, and if we assure them that those things are in place and have a credibility, not only from the school system's perspective, but also principals who they know and trust, from the elementary school, as well as parents who have experienced that or sixth graders who are now in the middle school, that helps ease people's concerns. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Doc Kaufman.
Thank you as well for the presentation. I have a couple clarification questions, and then one more big-picture question. With regard to Cesar Chavez, just to make sure I understand, so the, the kids who are native Spanish speakers in that school and in that area right now, they will be put into a lot, if they want to apply to attend that school, they'd be put in a lottery, just like everybody else, correct? Right? And those who end up going to neighborhood schools, are any, is there thought being given to what their needs might be in terms of ESOL teachers, additional supports, that those kids who don't, either don't make it into the lottery, back into the school, or choose not to, that might need at some of the neighborhood schools that may currently not have those, those staff and those services available?
Right. And the, the simple answer is yes. In regards to elementary schools and in that area of the county in particular, part of, we've transitioned. At one point in time, the number of native Spanish speakers that we had in the county was relatively modest. At that time, what we did was we established ESOL centers, and we would bus children out of their neighborhoods to an ESOL center for education purposes. With the growing numbers, at the elementary level, we provide those services in the home school now, so that their neighborhood school can go ahead and provide the ESOL support services, and they're not forced to, again, leave their neighborhood school. And so the schools that these children would be assigned to if they're not in the immersion program, in terms of Rosa Parks, in terms of Chelum, currently have in place ESOL services, and they would be enhanced through a combination of-
Right, so you'll be looking at the capacity there, given the influx of additional non-native speakers that would be probably coming into those schools.
That is correct.
And then this is a, just a big-picture question for Dr. Maxwell. I know, without trying to hold you to any specifics, obviously, there's a lot of exciting programs and initiatives that I think parents in the school system, as well as those who are, have younger children who may be considering coming into the school system, you know, will be excited about, but just longer term, you know, do you have sort of some strategy or vision for what we'll be doing, you know, where we might be three or five years from now, in terms of, obviously, we'll be building on these programs, you know, moving and adding additional grades, but, you know, are you sort of, have you given some thought already to sort of what other types of programs or initiatives we might, obviously, budget permitting, be able to, you know, institute in future years that we haven't done in this year? Obviously, this is a great start, but just wanted you to pull out your crystal ball for a minute, and, and maybe just give us a sense if you've, if you've had any, done any thinking, and your team has done any thinking on that line, on those lines.
Well, I'd certainly say that, you know, we've heard testimony, and I certainly agree with all of the testimony, the, the, some of us that were here last night heard parents, again, talking about more options for international baccalaureate, they're happy that I've recommended one elementary school in primary years, but I agree wholeheartedly that we should probably have a dozen or- that we should probably have a dozen or two primary-years elementary schools to make it more accessible. I understand the request that they be more than themed programs, you know, and offer magnet opportunities. The problem is that you need space, of course, to do that, and we don't really have a lot of extra space right now. So, you know, there are some bonds that go there. I think that some different, so I think some additional programs there, some additional language offerings tied to the international baccalaureate programs, but also standing independently. I was very impressed with a school that I saw in Baltimore City last year, I believe, that offered four language immersion strands placed on a IB platform, which was a K-12, a K-8 school. So...
But we know what the headline's going to be tomorrow.
Yes, Doc. Dr. Sharon, Peta will be calling you in the morning.
I think that, I think we need to do, and I don't, I can't tell you that I have, you know, some total solution to some of it, but we certainly have to look at some alternative programming. We have some students in our schools for whom our traditional programming is just not working, and we need to take a very hard look at that and make sure that we're providing some additional options there. Career and vote technical, you know, education, and my, you know, visits so far has been somewhat diminished over time, and we need to reinvigorate those programs. And then I think that we also need to continue to focus on the connection between jobs and careers, and that includes college-level work. So, you know, the STEM programs, we have some STEM programs here, but there's, it's certainly a growing field, a field that's there. But creativity in that area, I mean, there are courses nearby that I have some experience with that are teaching high school-level courses in unmanned aerial flight, like drones and those kind of things, in collaboration with businesses. I spoke with some folks from MedImmune just last week about biomedical work, which I know we're doing some with the community college, but certainly with the number of students we have, we have, we certainly have the ability to do a great deal more in these areas. I also think some schools that offer some of the traditional program options, but do it at different times for students because their, you know, their other needs are somewhat different. So I'd just say, there's a little bit.
Yeah, that's quite a lot. Thanks very much.
You bet.
That's great.
Okay, I got a couple of questions. One, actually, that follow-up from Dr. Kaufman's question that just jumped out at me. So if Cesar Chavez is going to be enrolled by lottery, how are we going to ensure balance between English-language and Spanish-language learners in the school?
Each kindergarten enrollment, there's a form that, PA-14 is what it's called, where we, again, inquire regarding the native language spoken in the home, and we'll use that as guidance in terms of identifying, again, those that would be considered native English speakers versus native language speakers.
So are you essentially going to kind of do two lotteries? One lottery for English-language learners, one lottery for Spanish-language learners?
No, there would be one lottery, but in terms of making assignments or placement offers, in terms of achieving the balance that the World Languages Office has requested, we would essentially march down the list, you know, alternating between English language and...
Also, just curious about, when I'm looking at the new Hyattsville school, I was a little curious about why Lewisdale Elementary, which is the most overcrowded of the bunch, has the smallest impact in just what the thinking was and what the plans are around Lewisdale.
The Lewisville Elementary remains an area of significant concern. One thing, if you look at the geography and an aerial photograph of the school and the attendance area, you'll see that it's quite compact. In fact, in terms of reducing the size of its attendance area, you would have to make what we would consider be unnatural and unreasonable divisions of neighborhoods, of streets, in terms of cutting down the size to what the building can accommodate. And that's one of the things that leads us to conclude that, again, we want to have discussions with our CIP group about the feasibility of a possible addition to that building.
The other question, once we move, and this could be Dr. Maxwell or others, once we move the five or six schools in 15, 16, from fifth, sixth grade to K-5, is, how close are we to kind of universal K-5? I know we have a few K-8s, but is the goal universal K-5, or is there more work to do with other schools?
There is much work still to be done. There, if we look at it, again, moving from south to the northern part of the county, in the southern portion of the county, we can do that fairly rapidly. One of the concerns there that we have to address is the fact that some of our elementary schools are significantly under-enrolled. And removing that sixth grade is going to raise the question of practical operational capacity in those buildings. And so we want it to be very judicious in terms of making that change and make sure we recognize that implication. As we move to the central part, we can go ahead and do that, but we begin running out of space for middle school students. And in the northern portion, there's not room for middle school students, nor for elementary boundary adjustments. And that's where, in the CIP, currently it's in the out-years, there's actually two additional middle schools that have been proposed, but again, funding remains, right now, not obtainable.
And my final question in that regard has to do with, I mean, a lot of this, obviously, is driven by boundaries and space and capacity, and I've heard a lot of angst around social development, and frankly, I'm less concerned about that. I think these kids adjust pretty well. I'm curious, though, about what we know and what we've studied about the academic advantages or disadvantages of K-6 versus 6'8", whether we have data or research that shows that sixth graders perform better or worse on state-standardized tests or other measures of academic performance when they're in a K-6 elementary school versus when they're in a 6'8" middle school. And then even more particularly, in our own context, what our plans are to really begin to track that data in these schools, to see how these students are performing academically and whether or not it is providing them either an academic advantage or disadvantage.
With the permission of the board, we would ask for time in order to get that information together and then respond.
Do you, so, fair enough. Have you, has that been part of the formula? I mean, have our folks looked at, looked at studies about academic performance, where we're making these decisions, and have we looked at data? I'm glad that you would, but is that something that's been part of the assessment?
We actually put in a request for our Research and Evaluation Department to do a comprehensive report on looking at the data for our students that we've currently moved from elementary to a middle school component.
And a brilliant thought just came to my mind. So, and while we're doing that analysis, also, obviously, looking at some of our K-8 schools and how students are performing in that, in that, so, I mean, particularly when we're looking at sixth graders, how are these sixth graders doing in a K-8 school? How are they doing in a K-6 school? And how are they doing in a 6'8" school?
We definitely have the K-8 data. We will have to check to see how updated it is.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Eubanks.
Thank you, everyone. This has been very enlightening, and a lot of questions I had have already been asked. But I have, just a couple of things I want to say. Because I was here last night, and I tend to hear the same thing from parents, because everybody who knows me know that I'm the community person. I want to know what the community needs, and they still have a problem with us as a system because we seem to always be reactive to things because we don't let them know beforehand. We're not proactive. I had four parents come to me afterwards to tell me they found out yesterday just by seeing another parent at school, and these are parents who are telling me they looked, but where they normally looked, it had been moved on the website. So we have to figure out how to get the information. And if we have it one place, leave it there, not move it somewhere else and the people don't know. And then we were able to tell them about education matters that a lot of them weren't aware of, but they get the alerts through their phones. But if they had had education matters, they would have known in enough time. And as well, they made a suggestion that, why don't we, since we've had this in other schools, like the sixth graders moved them with the middle schools, why don't we have those schools that we've already used be the ones to talk to them on how either smooth the transition was or what we've learned in the transition? We're not even using the people we've already had who have done it, you know, so, because they'll listen to another parent before they'll listen to us. So we just need to use what we have that's already working and not, you know, try to recreate the wheel a lot of times. And, yeah, and that's it. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Monday.
Thank you. Excuse me. Just had a question about something that another colleague mentioned, Ms. Epps, regarding the collaboration with the county economic development plans. And Dr. Maxwell is familiar, we recently got an email from someone who was interested in the Westphalia project, that I'm sure that everyone is familiar with, that affects District 7 toward Upper Marlboro. And in that development, they are estimating 15,000 dwellings. And I do see, and I'm happy to see, that there is some forecasting and some planning around Arrowhead Elementary School. But I think that that may impact, that impact may go as far as high school as well as middle school. So my question is more about how that project is being looked at and planned around for the middle school as well as Wise High School, which is the only high school that far down, and the impact that development would have on those schools and what's being done. Thank you.
In regards to the Westphalia project, as that project received, again, county-level review and approval, sites for five elementary schools, one additional middle school, and one additional high school were identified as part of the requirements for full development of that project.
I'm sorry, could you, what was that breakdown again? One, another high school?
That's correct. Again, 15, when we talk about 15,000 housing units, that is a substantial, you know, period of growth. And there was a realization that the existing complement of schools would not be sufficient alone in terms of accommodating that increase. And so they identified in the preliminary stages that, again, sites would be dedicated for additional elementary. I believe it was one additional middle school and one additional high school. And again, that's not necessarily the construction of the buildings, but the dedication of a site. They also anticipated, I believe it was renovation of Arrowhead Elementary as part of the overall scheme. Again, I think at this point, the number of units that have actually received approval for construction is substantially less than that 15,000, but there are, again, some protections in place to ensure that we don't rely solely on just existing schools to accommodate that growth.
Okay, thank you.
That does it for round one. Ms. Williams, did you have a round-two question? All right, Ms. Williams? You're up.
Just for clarity, there seems to be a number of definitions or terms that are floating around. We have the student, the state-rated capacity, and then the term of overcrowdedness. When constituents talk about their schools being overcrowded, I don't know how to define that. How do we define the term of overcrowdedness? And when do we start to look at the amount, the capacity of the school and start to say this will become overcrowded over time? So the first question is, how do you define overcapacity in a percentage-wise? And the second question is, when do we start to look at that school to consider whether or not, over time, it's going to become overcrowded?
The, while the state-rated capacity has a very precise technical definition, there is not a comparable technical definition in regards to overcrowdedness. That's more of a colloquial phrase, if you will, and, again, even when among the school district in using that, I'm not sure that there is a absolute standard that uses it. For example, when we talk about the Office of Student Records and Transfers, they begin to restrict transfers into a school when that school reaches 93% of capacity. When we talk about adding a temporary to a building, again, they're looking for, again, it being at least 100% of state-rated capacity before making those temporary additions to the school. When we start talking about making CIP improvements, part of what they're looking for is, again, not just the present circumstance, but also, as you suggested, what are the long-term prospects for that? In regards to the long-term prospects, every year, there's a educational facility master plan that's published. As part of that, we've also identified, or we also anticipate what the enrollment would be in future years, seven years, I believe, is what we publish in that document. And there we try and identify upcoming issues in regards to capacity and use that as a spur, if you will, in terms of talking about what kind of adjustments may be necessary.
So if we look at the 93%, when you start to restrict new people to enroll or transfers, and then your capacity for, I guess, long-term, that's seven years. Is that for all the schools, elementary through high school, or is it just considered for elementary?
That is elementary through high school, and we also include our special regional schools, our early childhood centers, in those projections.
Okay. And just one other question, sort of piggybacking on Ms. Monday's question about the development of Westphalia and the facilities that are going to be considered in the future. Is there a timeframe that you are considering when those new facilities will come online? Is that being considered? Just to say that we're going to add, you know, a high school or a middle school in the future without a timeframe, that may not help the situation if the development happens and the school doesn't come for 10 years.
And I'd have to go back to the details of the regulatory approvals that were done for the Westphalia project, but part of what they've anticipated is that as the roads were dedicated, you know, for public use or made available for public use, is when those sites would become available. The development review portion of the Maryland National Capital Park and Planning does advise us of upcoming cases. For example, as they go ahead and say, we're going to develop Phase Two of the project or Three and add 300 houses, they do alert us to that, so we can begin to anticipate, again, the more immediate, as well as the longer-term impacts on our schools.
So when you're, when you're looking at that, that over time, how is that, we're talking about something that will severely impact our CIP program. Is there a consideration for, you know, I guess, looking at the budget in the next three to four years to say, we need to set aside money for that, or we need to start building a relationship with the state and county, or whomever to get this money put in, put into our budget cycle for those schools?
And there are mechanisms that are currently in place, not necessarily specific to Westphalia, but in regards to development in particular. Again, in Prince George's County, there's a adequate public facilities assessment that's done. Part of that includes commitment of impact fees, if you will, for public facilities, which then become available to help contribute to improvements in our physical facilities, new schools, additions, and so forth. Again, so as those additional thousands of units become available, the coffers that are available in terms of contributing, the local share of capital improvements, again, is increased correspondingly.
Thank you.
Mr. Burrows.
Dr. Eubanks and Dr. Maxwell, just wanted to mention, we have some of the best principals in the county here with us tonight. I see Ms. Prince from Tolman High School, Ms. Adams from Friendly High School, District 8, and honorary Ms. McNeil, who lives in District 8, and among others. Just wanted to thank you guys for coming out tonight. We appreciate the work that you do every day, so just wanted to acknowledge the principals here. here.
Thank you, Mr. Burrows. Great job. All right. I don't see any other questions at this time. And if that's the case, then we've concluded our presentation, item 5.0. There are no follow-up items on the agenda this evening. Given that, that concludes the February 19, 2014 CIP and Fab Committee Meeting. Thank you for your participation. We are adjourned at 7:56, 6:56, and with the indulgence of our folks, we will take a two or three-minute break to grab another glass of water and get right back to begin our budget hearing in about five minutes.